Okay, it's seven o'clock. It's time for our meeting and I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I call regular meeting of the Buckham City Council of Order. First, as our tradition to introduce our Wesleyan students. Do I see five of you back there? And, mm, sounds about right, yeah. Ask you to-
Don't ask them to count though.
Stand where you are and give us your name and where you're from, what your major is, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dylan Williams. I'm from Wheeling, West Virginia, and I'm currently an accounting major.
I'm Christopher Denna. I'm from Stafford, Virginia, and I'm a support business major.
I'm Mohammed Al Zalani. I'm from Middle East. I'm a business administration major.
I'm Allison Bill. I'm from Yellow Spring, West Virginia, and I'm a business management major.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Brown. I'm from Bridgeport and I'm a business management economics and psychology major.
Well, we're always glad to have you. Whereabouts from the Middle East? Where you from?
Saudi Arabia.
Okay. Thank you. Next on agenda is Mary Al Baal, and she's ill or something. West Virginia Hunter Education Program. And she's asked, could I read this to you? "West Virginia Hunter Education Program. All persons born on or after January 1, 1975 must successfully complete a certified hunter education course before purchasing a hunting license." Reference West Virginia State Code Chapter 20-2-38. "When purchasing a hunting license, the person must present a certificate of completion to the agent issuing the licenses. The Franklin B. Bartlett Post Number 7 of the American Legion will be hosting a hunter education program which will be taught by staff of the West Virginia Department of Natural Resources. The class is free of charge and will be held at the American Legion at 16 South Canola Street in Buckham. Pre-registration is mandatory. Participants may pre-register by contacting the Department of Natural Resources at French Creek, 304-924-6211 and ask for Nancy. The scheduled dates for classes are Monday, March 31st, 6 until 9:30. Tuesday, April 1st, same hours. Wednesday, April 2nd, same hours. Attendees are required to attend all three sessions of the training in order to be certified. Point of contact, Bob White at 613-0648 or Mary Al Baal, 460-7377." The next item on our agenda, let me say to y'all, it's really good to be back here. As you know, I had some surgery and was off my feet for a while. Still a little shaky, still some pain in the back, but I'm doing well and it's really good to see y'all. Believe me, it's good to be here.
Mary, your wife said that she's so happy you're out of the house tonight.
Yeah. She's got the remote control back. Next item on our agenda is automated license plate readers. West Virginia State Police. Matt, you'll direct it. We usually have a podium there, but somebody stole it.
I've asked a couple gentlemen to join us tonight as we've discussed the automated license plate readers over the last few months, and some questions have come up in the council's direction. I have asked Sergeant Light, who is the Director of WIVICS, which stands for the West Virginia Intelligence Exchange of the State Police, to speak about the LPRs tonight. And I've also invited George Jacobs. George Jacobs is currently employed by the 3M Corporation. However, he is a retired detective sergeant with the Maryland State Police and was instrumental in setting up Maryland's LPR system a number of years ago. So I've invited him to speak about the system as well. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Sergeant Light from the West Virginia State Police.
Good evening, gentlemen. Like you said, I'm Sergeant Light, West Virginia State Police. I've been with state police seventeen years. From then, I was six years with the Department of Interior, so about twenty-three years law enforcement. I worked the road for nine. I was on the governor's security detail for three. And I've been Director of the Intelligence Unit for about four, four or five years right now. So, as seen mentioned, our unit's called WIVICS. It's the West Virginia Intelligence Exchange. It's a law enforcement information sharing system. It's been operational since 1995. Under that falls the statewide license plate reader program, which we started about three years ago. We started looking at the technology. We thought it'd be a great way to protect our state, to help fight crime, and of course for homeland security. We went to Ohio, checked some of their units, and we decided to go with LSAG Company, which is what most of the units are now. And that's where George worked when he first started with us, like three years ago. I guess he was our first salesman, but we now have forty-nine mobile units across the state. There's twenty-seven agencies that participate in the program. Every agency has to sign an agreement, participation agreement, and have to abide by policy and procedure, which we wrote, based on intelligence units across the country and based on the twenty-eight CFR Federal Regulations for Law Enforcement Intelligence. Basically, a unit, it just captures a number, a plate. When it goes by, it doesn't know whether it's a Pennsylvania plate, West Virginia plate, Ohio plate. It just reads the number. Now, when it goes by, it does take a picture of the car and the number. If there's something in the hot list, a stolen vehicle, a wanted person, a missing person, an Amber Alert, all that goes automatically into the National Criminal Information System. And that's a hot list that gets downloaded to all the units twice a day. And if that, a police officer is driving and that tag would, should happen to come up, say, for example, 1234, stolen vehicle. Then that officer looks, 1234, stolen vehicle. But the one that was actually in the NCIC list, may have been from Pennsylvania, the one that just passed was from West Virginia. So that officer has to verify, oh no, that's not the right one, so that's a mistake. Turns it off and goes on. The data, it records, every plate that goes by, it records. It goes into our database and we keep it for one year. We originally wrote the policy for three years, but it became a storage issue and not a legal issue. But we, there's a lot of case law. There are some states that have it for five years. Basically, once we reevaluated and we decided to keep it a year, we also looked at past investigations that we've used it on, and we didn't need it any more than a year. So that's how, that's how long we keep it. So any questions that I can go at this point? That's kind of it in a nutshell, but any direct questions?
Can you, can you maybe talk a little bit about how the, how the database stored information has been used in criminal investigations? Make some real life examples. And we heard the one about, there was a murder case that talked about, maybe it was in, I want to say Louisiana, something, also about the ATM guy who had found a murder that way and the other. Can you give us some-
You've already heard that one. Actually, here in Charleston, we had a car jockey where the car was stolen. An elderly gentleman at the ATM. They beat him up, took him out of the car, stole his car, and it was missing. And we put that in and we actually found where his car was still. They, the Charleston PD thought the car was out of state, so they kind of stopped the investigation. They called us. We searched it and found out that it was actually in the state because it had hit one of the cameras that day. So that vamped up where it was, so they found the car after that. Drug cases, there's been a lot of drug cases where suspects come in from out of state and they've tripped our cameras and we've used those to track their drug movements. And I've actually testified in federal court with those images, and they were allowed in court, so no problem there.
You mentioned that there are forty-seven mobile units in the state. Was that right?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine mobile units. And how many state and area units are there?
We have five right now.
Where are those deployed? Or is that not?
Well, actually, the turnpike, that's where we focused on the turnpike because everything kind of dumps in there. And it's all traffic coming into the state, not going out. Because we have a lot of, I don't know if you've heard, it's been maybe last year, the doctor that killed his wife in Pennsylvania. He came through and hit one coming on the turnpike, and that's how he was arrested. We knew he was going to do. So if we have them going out of the state, that's not a purpose. That would be more for tracking, which is not what it's for. But if they come in the state, it immediately alerts to a dispatcher or one of the state police dispatchers will now on dispatch, and they send someone out to find that vehicle.
I understand that this is a great tool for the officers to utilize as far as finding the license plates that are put into it and everything, criminals and everything. However, what purpose, what useful purpose does it serve to store and keep all those license plates that are not put into it as a BOLO?
It'd be for investigative purposes. Let's say, for example, let's say, for example, you took your cellphone right now and you went out and took a picture of every tag that's on the, that's on the parking lot. Now, if you come in, again, after you do that and you look at all that data, can you tell me which car is mine by looking through that?
Why would I need to?
Exactly. And there's no need to. And there's no need to access our data, and no one can access it because it's law enforcement sensitive data unless there's a reasonable suspicion established by law enforcement officers. Now, let's take that one step further. Let's say you have that data. You leave here and you realize that when you go out, you left your car unlocked. This is a very, very simple scenario, I'm saying, but say you left your car unlocked. Two days later, you find out that something valuable was in your car and it's gone now. So you go to the chief, do a report. You say, "Well, chief, we've got all these plates that were on the parking lot." He still really can't access that because they were just here. He could if he wanted to maybe look for witnesses, but it's not, it's not there for phishing. But let's say whatever was stolen out of your car was tried to pawn at the local pawn shop. And someone called the chief and said, "This person just tried to pawn whatever was stolen." So the chief now has his name. He runs it and he finds out what his vehicle was. So then he goes back and searches your plates for that vehicle and found out that that person was on the lot at the same time that your property was stolen. I know that's a very simple scenario, but that's what it's used for.
What percentage of, do you estimate this might be of all the other numbers that you're going to record in there other than the ones that are BOLO?
I couldn't give that number. And the data, when it, when it comes up, if you're a law enforcement officer and you put a plate in and it shows, all you get is the tag, the time, the place, and the picture of the vehicle. That doesn't guarantee that if it's your vehicle, it doesn't mean you were driving it.
Sure, I understand that. How much of the vehicle does it take a picture of? I have seen a picture that's been traveling around on the, on the web and everything like that of a, of a car in a driveway with a gentleman and his two daughters getting out of it. And you can see the doors are open and they're there. Does it take a wide frame picture that big of that vehicle when it's in the driveway?
That would depend on the position when it read the tag. There's a certain frame that it won't. Like, I don't really know how to answer that. Maybe, maybe George can when he speaks about the technical issues, but it would depend on where the vehicle was positioned when it read the tag.
You'd mentioned that the, that access to databases with NCIC, it's law enforcement sensitive, reasonable suspicion basis. What kind of security is in place to prevent other agencies, maybe at the federal level? I mean, just to, I mean, just to throw out there what the real concern here is. Federal agencies having access to this database either directly or surreptitiously to, you know, make copies of, you know, to keep this data that's collected for a period longer than a year?
They can't ac-, now, a federal law enforcement agency can access it if they sign the agreement and go by the same principles that everyone else does.
Right, I understand that, but all I'm talking about is kind of like more surreptitious kind of access. And as, you know, kind of the stuff that's been in the news lately about warrantless wiretapping and how this kind of data collection could play into that and be used for, you know, purposes that are kind of outside of its, you know, scope and intent.
Now, this data is state police-owned data. There's no connection to any other agency unless they can log on after they sign the agreement and go by the procedures. Now, there's checks and balances in place. I do audits. I can go into my computer in the morning and pull up, say, every tag that's been checked or queried that day, and it tells me the officer that queried it, when he queried it, and why. And if I find something weird, if there's an officer that's queried the same tag maybe twenty times, now that might just be an investigation, but still it might be something else, so we'll actually call and check on that.
Is there a way to delink the two kind of functionalities of this? The hot list versus the data collection part of it? Is there a way to accomplish one and not the other?
Now, the way the system's set up, when it reads, it receives the hot list as soon as it connects, and then as soon as it connects and uploads that, it downloads all the data that's in there.
I understand you're not a computer programmer. But neither am I. I would think that with all the technology available right now with the programming and everything, that the system could be set so that it would only make a hit on the license numbers that are put into the system, not on every one of them. And that seems to be the big question with most everybody is why does it collect everybody's when you're only looking for certain ones? And why couldn't it be programmed to only find the ones that go by you that have been programmed as hot?
It doesn't hit on everybody's tag. It only hits on the ones that are hot. The other ones go into the database, but it doesn't hit-
Well, the database then, that's what I'm saying. And why would it not just completely ignore those and not put them in the database and then hit on the hot ones and that would be the only one?
Because it only reads the number, the metallic number?
Yeah, well, you've probably heard that the Department of Homeland Security has, within the last couple of weeks, admitted that they have given this system to people and to organizations with the hopes of gathering data. And that's been my question all along, is the gathering data part of it on people that are not criminals? People say, "Well, I'm not worried about it because I haven't done anything." "I'm not worried about it because I haven't done anything, but I do feel like it's an infringement of some of my constitutional rights." And I think that's where, where the question of keeping these license numbers stored for a certain amount of time, longer than fifteen or thirty days, comes into question. Some states allow for five years of storing them. And I can't believe that, that the Homeland Security would, in essence, come down and say, "Here, I'm from the government. I'm here to help you. Take this. It's free. Utilize it. It's going to do you a good job, but you know, really it's going to do us a good job too in collecting all this data, but you don't have to be involved in that." I think you understand probably where I'm coming from there. So my question really comes down to, why can't it just be programmed to record the ones that are the hot numbers and not everybody else's?
Maybe that's more of a technical question.
Well, it probably is. That's why I said it's not going to be programmed.
It could be if you wanted to do it. I felt good to think about this in some perspective. However we think about it, I have a RIDE card, a CVS card, a Sheetz card. I mean, I'm set up for those things voluntarily. Literally, all they do is track my habits. All they do is track everything I buy and that's stored somewhere, and I don't know what they're doing with that.
But you have signed away saying-
I have. I have, yeah.
I agree you can do this. I didn't sign anything saying they can do this.
Well, unless you, unless we're ready to say that the, you know, by access, by obtaining and using a driver's license.
Well, it's not your license plate for that matter. It's just there.
You're right.
I have a more general question. I'm sorry, and not to, not to- Can you explain the relationship between the intelligence, the WIVICS, and the Fusion Center? Are they the same thing? Are they different?
Fusion Center's not part of the state police. I know it's been reported here that it is, but it's not. It's a separate thing.
Well, the offer, the agreement that, the agreement that the city signed to have, to, I don't have a copy with-
To get the unit.
To get the unit, says on there, if memory serves, I'm pretty sure that it does. It says, "West Virginia Intelligence Exchange, maybe in parentheses, Fusion Center." I mean, was that, is that not correct? There's no relationship between the intelligence exchange and the Fusion Center?
We're co-located with Fusion Center. They're like next door. But they purchased, the state police purchased six units and the fixed units and built the backbone, the database. They purchased all the other units and gave them to law enforcement as a support because they support law enforcement. They're not a law enforcement entity.
So Fusion Center does not have access to this data, or does?
They do, but they signed the agreement just like everyone else. And every time one of their analysts log in on behalf of a police officer during an investigation, then I get the record that they logged in, same thing as any law enforcement would.
And I guess my technical question is maybe for more technical guys, but doesn't Homeland, Department of Homeland Security have access to that through Fusion Center?
Only if they're law enforcement.
All right, so this is a, this is a separate standalone database that is not hardwired in with the Fusion Center.
Right.
But Fusion Center has access to it on standing with Buckham PD or Upshur County Sheriff or anybody like that? Is that, that's what you're telling me?
Right. Yeah, they cannot, there's nothing hardware to them. Now, there's also a separate agreement that he signed in order to access the data with the state police and the Fusion Center. I'm not sure of the one he signed with the, with the Fusion Center as far as using the equipment. Should be two, I think.
Right. Okay.
Do you trust that every officer, every unit that signed this agreement, 100% will not violate it?
No, sir.
That's why they audit it.
And it's the same with criminal histories and criminal records and all the DMV information and all your personal information. It's any law enforcement sensitive database. If an officer is out there and is corrupt, that's what happens.
And then, do you feel like the Department of Homeland Security would not violate it?
I don't know. Any officer or anyone with authority might.
It's like I said, I'm from the government and I'm here to help you, and I'm not being disrespectful to our government. I love my country and I respect it. I've served my country. I think the police officers around here, the state and down to the county and the city are fine officers, and they should have some sort of equipment like this that would help them. I just think that this particular piece, with all, with all the baggage it's bringing from our distrust of what our federal government is doing, what they've done with the IRS and with NSA and such. George Orwell of 1984 is certainly coming to be, come true, that Big Brother is here to watch us. And I was in security intelligence in 1970, got out in 1971. And I know what we did back then to watch people. So it's come a far cry from when I got out. But that's, that's just my viewpoint on stuff right now. I appreciate you being here and explaining this.
Are there any, and I just, well, that's not what I was saying, but I mean, I understand there's, you said there's somebody from 3M?
Yes, yes, George.
Maybe a more technical-
And one more scenario if I may. And we've actually used it several times for this, as far as the data. We've had people that have, has been suffering from dementia or Alzheimer's. It wasn't enough to put them in NCIC. They didn't make that criteria. But when an officer called, we have a missing person and he has dementia or Alzheimer's, but he's driving, we can put their tag in, we can accidentally locate them.
Okay, so you can add tags to the hot list beyond NCIC and Amber Alerts?
And it falls under the same criteria. There has to be a law enforcement nexus.
And that's a, that's a great tool. But it's still, it's something you've added in for a particular purpose. It's not as if each and other tags are being right there beside it, have no purpose whatsoever.
But what if, what if all of a sudden you were diagnosed?
Oh, fine. Put my tag in there.
Where are you getting caught?
That's all right. Me and Rodney Dangerfield.
But, but what I'm saying, it's in there, but it's not accessed unless there is a purpose. That would be the purpose. Now, I don't put it in as a hot list. I just query it to see if, if the patient had went, had went by, or the missing person had went by one of them, and that's how we track and find them.
Is it possible to hot list it to some?
Yeah, well, you know. Well, if you can put anything in that for a law enforcement nexus, yeah.
Any other questions for this gentleman?
Thank you. I think I'd like to hear the techie.
Thank you, sir.
This is my chauffeur. That question was just, I'll take a little at him. Never been called a geek before, but you know what? Good evening. I'm George Jacobs, Public Safety Consultant with 3M. I've been involved with license plate readers since 2003. I actually was involved with, I was Detective Sergeant with Maryland State Police. I was with Maryland State Police for thirty-four years and seven months before I got out and got into license plate readers on the public side. I was involved with establishing a program in Maryland. Maryland, being a very liberal state, has one of the biggest LPR programs in the country. They have systems that are, many of them on the roads, on cars. They have a lot of fixed systems. They're all tied into a database, very similar to what you have here in West Virginia. Now, I was involved with selling the first systems here in West Virginia and setting them up. And I can tell you that, a couple of examples here when you were asking about. Number one is the day we installed the very first system with a state police car in Charleston, West Virginia. Ten minutes afterwards, we got a hit on a stolen car. They made that recovery. But a few days later, now the officer had just one system, the only one in West Virginia at the time, was driving around in Charleston, it's his area. He's reading tags during this week. And at the end of the week, they have a drive-by shooting. It's a homicide. They got a tag number of the suspect vehicle. The tag doesn't belong on that car and the address is no good. So what they've got is just a car with this tag. We have no idea who owns it, where is it located? This trooper ran that tag number through his database, and he only had one week of data, but he ran it through that database and boom, it popped up. It showed he had read that tag at this same location twice during that week. So the investigators go to that location, they find the car, they find the suspect, the gun, they make the case. That's one of the reasons why you would actually want to save data, even if it wasn't a hit and it wasn't on the hot list, for investigative purposes. Like Sergeant Light was explaining, there's very limited access to this data. Every agency that has a couple of people, they're going to have access. They're not, they're not normally going to be people that you wouldn't trust. Every law enforcement officer that has CGIS clearance, they can do a background check on you. If you're an investigator, you can go in and do your, check your credit history. I mean, there's a lot of things they can do. There's always checks and balances. This is another system which allows them to look at something, but there's always checks and balances in place. There's a number of cases, and I've got a bunch of things I pulled up before I came here today. Aurora, Colorado. They had, they read about 1.2 million, 1.2 million reads during this one year with their systems, mobile systems, and they recovered 290 stolen cars. They made 233,000 hits that were either on the criminal list or the traffic list. In that state, they have a list that if your license is suspended or revoked or your tags are suspended, that it'll pop up in the alert. You do not have that in West Virginia. You don't have the traffic list. But a lot of states have a traffic list. And with that, you're going to get drunk drivers off the road. You're going to get people that their license is suspended, they don't have insurance. You get them off the road with those hits. That's the instant part of it. But the criminal investigation, the reason you save your data, is for those investigations. If you had, there's a serial rapist in Milwaukee. This serial rapist, they finally made this suspect in one case by getting a tag number that was seen in a couple of locations. They went back and he found forty, over a several-year period. Forty different locations where this car was in the area where the rape occurred. They made, I don't remember how many of the cases. They made several of the cases and he's charged, waiting trial on others. And it's because that data was stored there so they could check that tag and say, "Yes, you were here." Because he claimed he wasn't, but they have his vehicle in the area now. Those are the benefits of saving the data for investigative purposes. The key here is, what I'm understanding from you is, can you trust the people to not use it for other purposes? The example I just gave you about the forty different locations it was seen. In the state of West Virginia with forty-nine systems and five fixed- Virginia with 49 systems and five fixed throughout the whole state, there's 49 systems or on cars that are being used on a shift, so you're not going to be seen very often by a license plate reader in the state of West Virginia. I've been around the state the last two days and I have not seen one system until I pulled up here today. So you're not being tracked because you have to have a lot of reads, a lot of cameras. New York City, Lower Manhattan, 217 fixed cameras and mobile systems, just in a short area of, in that region. There they had a child abduction, a legitimate child abduction, not a parental argument, but they were, they did track this vehicle because they had so many cameras in one location, they were able to track the vehicle and locate. But the thing is, that's one of the few times you can track somebody, you have to have multiple vehicles to track them. If I put your tag in here, it may have been seen twice this year. That's it. Nobody can track you by seeing your tag twice in a year. When the system reads your tag, all it does is give a GPS coordinate, date and time of read, and a color picture of the vehicle and an infrared picture of the tag. That's all that's saved, so there's no name, there's no address, and if there's a follow-up investigation to be done, they have to take further steps to do it. So, the same steps they would do if they were doing a regular investigation. This here is just a tool to say, hey, this may be a stolen car, you want to follow up on it. Because the list comes out twice a day, they always confirm before they take action. This is just a warning saying, this might be a stolen car, you call it in, you run it to make sure and confirm it's stolen before you take action. That's one of the do it now part, but the actual investigative part, the tool is, you've got to have the tags in that database to make criminal cases. There's a lot of investigative cases that have been made because of it throughout the country, you know, I've got a bunch of them on there, if you really wanted to see some statistics, I could show you some. There have been court cases already in California, in Massachusetts, in Texas, where courts have upheld this, that there are no privacy issues with license plates, that it's not private data. It's just like Sergeant was saying earlier, you could go in the parking lot, take a picture of every one of these, and then you could come back tomorrow and you take a picture of every one of them, the next day and take a picture of every one of them. When it's all said and done, all you have is a picture of that tag and that vehicle and when you saw it, that's all this data is. For anything else to be done, there's got to be further law enforcement steps. Any questions?
Questions, man?
The, the examples that you cite are even, you know, even consider the ones in Charleston or urban areas, what about application of this technology in rural settings and, I mean, can you cite any?
Yes, indeed. I tell you, there, there is a small jurisdiction and it's, if you can believe, there's a small jurisdiction in California, that they have, they only have 13 police cars, okay, so you can figure the size is not much different than here. Right, you've got nine here?
Be nice to them.
So, all 13 have a system on it. They have five fixed cameras around the town, so they had a lot of issues with burglaries. And basically, what they did was, when they had, somebody saw a vehicle, no tag number, they just saw a vehicle and knew it was a black Tahoe, they, their fixed cameras saw a black Tahoe come through this intersection during that block of time. They ran the tag and now they're doing follow-up investigation, they contacted the owner, it was a young woman, turns out her boyfriend, who was out on parole for burglary, was driving her car with another guy, they actually tracked down the vehicle, she told them where the vehicle was, they located the vehicle, and sure enough, the suspect was there and he had the stolen property in the vehicle. That was a way of using, of fixing mobile systems at one time together, and basically, they do not access the data just like here, unless there's an investigation, they couldn't use it.
What about the question, Ron's question about how wide of a field is the photograph or take, can you speak to that?
If I got a vehicle in front of, I'm pulling up alongside of it, I'm taking a photograph, it's a funnel, it's shooting out, and it depends on the camera, like, most of the cameras here on the left side, the right side of the car, going 25 millimeter, it's going to extend out 28 feet, take a picture out there, if it's a 25, if it's a 16 or lesser, it's going to be lesser distance, but it's a small funnel. The infrared is going for the tag. When it does that, the overall, there's a color and infrared in each box, the infrared's going for the tag, the colored picture's taking the overall picture, but it's still the scheme, and there's only like a five-foot window for that infrared to take, to get the hit on there. So when you're at a distance, that funnel's a little bit wider, you may pick up a person if they're standing next to that vehicle when it gets the tag. But if you're driving down the street and you're passing a bunch of cars on the side of the road, you're only going to get the back of the car, you're not going to get people, you're not going to get anything else. It's when you have a wider area, in some of these rural areas, if you get a, read a tag, you may see a picture, but it's very rare that you would ever pick up a person on it.
That's basically what I was wanting to know about that particular picture, and I don't know whether you've ever seen the one that's on there or not.
I know what you're talking about, and truly, it looks like it was digital and it looks like it may have been from, it could have been from a camera, it could have been from a license plate reader, it could have been either, and nobody said, nobody knows.
And you believe everything that's on the internet?
Can you tell, what's the, these things are, these things are mounted at, what, a 45-degree angle coming off the corner?
Actually, the, the right, the right front, the right camera that's pointing forward, that's going to be mounted at 45. The left one is going to be mounted at a 22-degree angle, and the rear facing one is going to be at a 22-degree angle, 22, 23, depends on who sets it up.
Okay.
And you're only looking at a short distance, the 25-millimeter is going to give you two lanes of traffic, as far as, you know, two lanes wide, and on the right side, if it's a 25, it's the same thing.
So if you're looking at two lanes of traffic, you can capture two plates in a single image?
Yes, but you're going to, everyone's going to have a box around it, it'll let you know which one it read.
Okay.
Because there's a little box around, in the picture.
Anybody else?
This is a controversial issue. Some states are in the process or have introduced legislation that prohibits this. Connecticut may be, where I'm not too sure, some of those.
One of the, one of the Northeast liberal states has, has that right now, but there's, there's going to be some arguments about it, but most other states are, a lot of states are actually putting bills in to state how much time you can save it for. A lot of states are going for one year, two years, Tennessee's going for two years, the FBI, not the FBI, the federal government has allowed to save it for five years.
I think 30 days is plenty.
Well, see, there's investigations that you wouldn't make and solve crimes if you only had 30 days.
My, my prior career was in selling voting machines, electronic voting machines.
I know there's no fraud in that.
So there was no fraud in that one, whatever. And I, my sympathy's with you on this because I see the similarity between the two. However, the voting machines that were tampered with was all done and proved that it could be done within a controlled environment, as I'm sure in a controlled environment, this system could be hacked into also. They didn't consider the human element in any of this stuff with the voting machines, so, and it didn't consider the fact that it did not go out over the air, they weren't on any kind of a network or anything. But they did go into them and proved it, but the, the places where they really got into trouble utilizing those were Cleveland and places like that, where the whole polling places were. Anyway, so I'm, I'm assuming that you would have to have a rather corrupt division or something that would want to do something with your system also, in order to get it completely to survey and gather extreme data?
Well, because the data is only a picture of the tag, I don't see where there would be extreme data involved.
And I wonder, I wonder why Homeland Security said they were collecting data with this?
Well, they're used by the public. A lot of private companies use this for their own benefits, to repo cars, number one. Basically, they're looking for cars to repossess, and this tag, this. The tag will read thousands of that.
So this kind of, so this kind of technology is being used by the, by the private sector currently?
Yes, it is.
And is that regulated at all?
No.
I know, well, I know that there's no Western, there, there is no state law on this issue at all, it was one of my eye-opening experiences now in the legislature this year, that there's no state law on this, this issue.
Well, I didn't realize that private citizens, private companies were utilizing this, I thought it was just strictly governmental agencies.
Yeah, it's being used by law enforcement, the military, colleges are putting systems up around the campus.
David, you got my?
Not yet.
Let's talk about that after. Repo companies around the country are part, I mean, there's so many of them, they're popping up now, those dog to repo man to go on, hip.
Let me ask a question, you said you'd been in this business of what you're doing since 2003, but prior to that, you had helped, you were instrumental at least in establishing this program in the state of Maryland?
Yes.
At what time, when did that start?
That's when it started in 2003, utilizing LPR. I retired in '08, so I used it for five years there.
All right, so from, in the last 11 years, how has the technology changed?
Oh, it's gotten much better, accuracy in reads, the cameras were big, boxy and ugly. In the beginning, some of them were only infrared, they didn't even have the colored picture with it. The storage, back in the day, then you couldn't store many, many pictures on the computers because the computers didn't have enough storage. So now, I mean, I've got 100,000 reads, you know, on my computer, and it's not a problem, but if you had put 100,000 reads on a computer back then, you would have, you would have killed your computer, it would have crashed. But, so the accuracy and the systems have gotten a lot smaller, technology's gotten better, the back office to all of these systems have gotten a lot better for investigative purposes, and more secure, they actually are more secure now than they were before.
Anybody else?
Can you describe this, I'm sorry, can you just maybe speak to the security, the data security issue?
Well, the data is, I can tell you, data from my system goes nowhere, but in police cars, it's going to the state server, and once it's in there.
Okay, then it's out of your.
Then it's out of your control. Exactly.
Can I add a couple more, just two more?
Please.
Which call here, please? Oh, sure. Sorry. George actually hit on a point that I wanted to make, we don't have enough out there to track people, like you said, you would have to have one on probably every mile on every road to do that, so, again, and it's great technology, and, but it's still a tool, it's not foolproof, it reads italic numbers. We had a stolen plate, for instance, out of Washington, that it was a personalized plate, S A T E, so every time one of our cruisers would go by at red state and said that was a stolen vehicle, so it has to be verified by the person, so, I just wanted, it's not perfect, and it doesn't take a picture, if it's just driving through a neighborhood and there's not a plate, it doesn't take, that means there's no picture, so, I don't want to make sure you can do that too.
That metallic image is what triggers the camera.
And we've got reads from mailboxes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have Jeremy McGowan has asked to speak?
Thank you. There's two things that came to my mind when I was listening to the prior presentations there. One is asbestos prevented millions of fires, but I don't think anybody would say that it was a really good idea in retrospect. And the other one is that a wise man once said that those who would give up essential liberty for a little temporary security deserve neither liberty nor security. And I think he'll recognize that as Thomas Jefferson. As everyone here is aware, I am firmly against the use of the ALPRs, not because I don't trust our police, but instead because I do not trust our government. Our government is fractured to the point that the NSA is now known to be spying on Congress as well as the American people. If the Congress of the United States of America is being spied upon without their permission, who exactly is in charge of this government? It's supposed to be we, the people. However, we have lost the strength in our collective voices, and there is now an all-out assault on our individual voices through the relentless attacks upon the First, Fourth and Fifth Amendments. I know there are people in this room that feel that I am a conspiracy theorist, however, I challenge them to go back through the records in the minutes of council meetings, which I have been in attendance, go back through my quotes in the Record Delta in the Intermountain, and find one singular instance of a theory that I've had relating to these ALPRs that has not later been proven as fact. I am making a stand here, in this state and in this city, my home, against the further erosion of our individual liberties and freedoms which are protected by the Constitution. Bacchanon has the potential to become the coolest small town in America that it had competed to be. However, we need to set the precedent and show that our small city of Bacchanon is far removed from the overreach of the federal system that we are all subjected to. Change comes one step at a time, from one voice to many. My voice was alone at the start of this fight, and nearly each day since I launched this campaign against the ALPRs, I have been approached, called, emailed and written to from people saying that they are thankful that I'm standing up for them. Many have expressed to me their fear of the government. Even the city council, because they fear some kind of retribution, whether it be from the canceling of a contract or the denial of a needed permit, they don't want to voice their opinions. There is a tangible fear from everyday people in regards to their government, even a small government such as Bacchanon, and this is not the way the United States of America should be. I plead with the council to help start the taking back of America here and now. Remove the ALPRs from use in Bacchanon. Show the state that we are still a government of the people, by the people and for the people. Be the example. I would now like to introduce to council Mr. Dorsey Shreve. Mr. Shreve is not a hacker, he is a computer security expert. At the time of his graduation, graduation, he was the youngest person in the state to have graduated university. His credentials are impeccable. He has worked for the same company as Edward Snowden in a significantly higher level. Mr. Shreve will now speak to you in regards to the slippery slope of the ALPR and the exploits which are, which sensitive data can be intercepted, changed, stored, manipulated, all unbeknownst to the police officer using the system. He will also speak as far as he can to the knowledge of surveillance systems on people and the databases similar to those that your personal information is stored through the use of the ALPRs. And as the police officer said, it's just a license plate, but that license plate read over and over again showing where you go, who you visit, what you buy, that develops who you are. Mr. Shreve?
Okay, after that glowing introduction, now I have to live up to what Jeremy has built me up as being. So, my name is Dorsey Shreve, I'm an 18-year seasoned enterprise architect, formerly having worked with Booz Allen Hamilton, which is the same company that Edward Snowden worked for. I've worked a number of positions with a number of corporations in DC and both for the federal government, Department of Defense and various intelligence agencies since 2004, including many of the technologies that, that the ALPR system, the system that the state police runs in Charleston and other, and Fusion Center and other systems, you know, throughout the country. So, what, you know, we would first like to address, which was originally why I was called into the council, was to present a demonstration of the insecurity of the ALPR systems and the data that they handle. While, while they profess that their, that the databases in Charleston are secure, that does nothing to authenticate the security of the data as it's transmitted from ALPR systems to Charleston, and there's no way to verify that that data has not been corrupted. There are very common, very simple methods to intercept and manipulate that data that could be done now more cheaply than ever. As far as, you know, as far as the ALPR systems are concerned, they're transmitting their data, you know, over a wireless network. And based on the widespread usage, that would be over a cellular network. Regardless of what, of what cellular communications technology is utilized, be it GSM or CDMA, which are the two, the two most popular cellular communications technologies in the country and in the world, GSM is inherently insecure, and CDMA, the security was compromised in 1998, and nothing has been done to change that. In fact, the encryption keys that are sent over here with CDMA are sent. In fact, the encryption keys that are sent over the air with CDMA are sent over the air with the actual data. So if you, if you, you know, listen for the data, you'll get the encryption key and therefore the data underneath. Now, on, underneath that cellular signal, you would have the independent data signal, which, you know, is standard IP. With the only secure method that they could use to get the data to the database in Charleston would be over a virtual private network or VPN, which many people use in day-to-day life, you know, be it through business, you know, or work just for general privacy, or even accessing, you know, their data from their own homes. However, with, with VPN technology, regardless of, you know, the two popular methods of either using IPsec, which is vulnerable to men, what's called man-in-the-middle attacks, or SSL VPNs, which the SSL can be stripped very easily from, you know, the data packets, there's no real secure method. And they can all be done without the ALPR system or the officers involved being aware that they're being compromised. Now, what the, as, as cellular technology has improved, there have been some changes as, as to the security, including 3G and 4G technologies. However, this is a moot point with what's called a femto cell. A lot of people recognize them as a cellphone booster. You can go, I'm sure you could go to the Intellis store adjacent to the city building and get a femto cell. What it allows you to do is, in a low signal area, you can connect it to an IP network, and that allows you to, it allows your phone to connect through the femto cell, use your home broadband connection to place calls, to use wireless data, et cetera. However, with that, and the way cellular networks are designed, they're inherently insecure because they do not authenticate what the femto cell is, if it's a legitimate tower connection, or if it's, or if it's a malicious connection. And that's just by design of cellular networks. They do not authenticate if it's a legitimate tower. To, you know, to substantiate what we're saying, we'll refer to the FBI's program otherwise known as Stingray, developed by Harris Systems. Harris Systems uses a modified femto cell to intercept and, much to the chagrin of the ACLU and Electronic Frontier Foundation, to warrantlessly and unknown to, you know, those connecting to it, intercept their data and reroute it through their systems. The interesting thing about that is with cellular devices, they connect to what is, what appears as the most prevalent, you know, the most powerful signal local to where they are. With femto cells, you're looking at a device smaller than a laptop. You could very easily, you know, if you stripped it out of its casing, I could, excuse me, you know, I could put it in something as small as a pad folio. I could also put, you know, another wire, another wireless cellular device, so that I could take the femto cell, pull the wireless data, strip the data out of it, manipulate it, and then retransmit it completely unbeknownst to, you know, the ALPR, the officer, or any other purpose that that cellular device, that that cellular communication was being intercepted. Now, we were denied the ability to demonstrate that technology, willfully denied, because of, you know, the various laws that the federal government has in place, and oddly through digital copyright. If we had altered firmware of femto cell, we would in fact be breaking the law. However, law, you know, we could, so we could not, you know, in effect do that. I would, you know, I actually refuse. I believe Jeremy conveyed that to the council, that I would not willfully break the law in providing the demonstration. So we were going to knock it down a level and provide the same man-in-the-middle and SSL stripping, you know, attack methods to show you that the data could not just be intercepted, but manipulated. In doing so, we had selected a few license plates of a few various individuals, some in this room, some not, that we were going to take the GPS coordinates of a few unsavory places, a few unsavory times, and we were going to put their license plates at those locations at those inconvenient times. So that's what everybody's missing. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to present that, you know, in another place and time. However, that really brings us down to the database issues. You know, it was, you know, it's been conveyed that, you know, all access to the databases are audited. However, as recently, including in the Record, as the Record Delta reported and various other news agencies throughout the country, the Department of Homeland Security is currently looking to develop a national database for long-term retention of ALPR data. They have, you know, there was no, you know, there, there were no qualms about they were planning on storing the data over a long-term period with no, no indication of the longevity of their storage. With that, it also goes to say, you know, while they're auditing individual queries, and I would pose this question to the gentleman from 3M, while they are, do audit queries, are they auditing the actual data itself and not just individual officer queries? If that is, if that is not the case, then other agencies, which have signed the memorandum of understanding, could be taking the data and restoring it for long-term archival usage. Now, with my background with Booz Allen Hamilton, one of the, one of the projects that was not classified even as confidential because it was for the benefit of our soldiers overseas in theater, was the development of a long-term surveillance database. In doing so, we were architecting a database to accept multiple input streams from a variety of methods, be it ALPR, remote sensing platforms, drones, radar, whatever, you know, individual soldier text input, whatever data streams could be put into it now and into the future that we don't currently have developed. When we were doing this, it wasn't just for the here and now. It was for the long-term archival over a long period, and then being able to correlate that data and use to, for use into the future. And that is to, you know, that speaks to what Mr. Hugh and Jeremy are concerned about, is the long-term usage of that data. While, while our license plate information is public, it is not readily accessible without a system like that. And it goes far above and beyond the capabilities of a human being in a, in a normal investigation. At that point, and Orwellian, you know, views would warrant, we might as well just put GPS bracelet on all our angles. So are there any questions?
I, you'll hit. Well, my, well, actually, my question is more, actually, I have a question for Chief Gregory, based on the agreement, the operation. We can come back to it.
I would have liked for the, for Mr. Jacobs to have heard your presentation instead of leaving, but I understand they had to, a long drive back to Charleston. But you present some interesting aspects of what could be done and what probably has been done in other instances, but I don't think I would make a point of saying that you worked with Mr. Snowden.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, I wouldn't say that I worked with Mr. Snowden, in fact, because I definitely did not. But it goes to show the scope of the government entities and corporations that, and the number of them that have that, you know. And with somebody like Edward Snowden that can access that data, who's to say some, anybody really could?
I understand.
So you're, so the primary data vulnerability that you're talking about here, that you have talked about here, isn't the transmission from the mobile unit to the database in Charleston through the cellular network, essentially?
Correct.
What, you know, what motive would somebody, what motive would, and what would cause somebody to do that?
If I may, if you don't mind?
Sure.
The ALPR system is designed to basically track and find criminals. Criminals don't want to be tracked and found. If you have an individual that is even moderately tech-savvy, with $200, a laptop, and a little bit of training, that person can be easily set up to be able to evade detection through the ALPR system.
You're talking about somebody would try, would set themselves up to wipe themselves off the system?
Wipe themselves off the system, or even, say, a stalker wanted to, to find their ex-wife, at, somebody that wanted to tag somebody in the federal witness relocation program. Any identifiable information can be inputted in there unbeknownst to the system administrators, and then all they have to do is sit back and watch the sirens and lights.
And additionally, on top of that, and the point of, you know, the specific method that we're going to perform the demonstration using, you know, that, using the substitution, is that, you know, you know, with, with the Department of Homeland Security, you know, we're, you know, the Department of Homeland Security was formed to stop terrorism. When you're speaking to that effect, you, you know, you could potentially, you know, place somebody, you know, in with a group that, you know, would be inscrupulous and would be damaging to their person. You could place them at, you know, a drug lab. You could place them in any number of, at any number of locations that would be very, very detrimental to their livelihoods and their freedoms. And it would not take very much to do it. And that's the, you know, the demonstration that I was want, that I was wanting to do, you know, could be done with, you know, for the purpose of doing it, you know, using standard computer Wi-Fi technology, I could do it with free apps available for, you know, off the app stores for Android and Apple. It's not something that's terribly difficult to do. Somebody with a little time, a little motivation, and very little money could do this and, you know, completely undetected.
Any more questions?
That's one I'm going to.
Thank you, Mr. Shreve. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to departments and board reports. Michael?
Okay. Excuse me. I have several items of business, and a lot of them are time and deadline sensitive. Reference in your agenda, Resolution 2014-9. Resolution 2014-9 is our general fund budget revisions. Throughout the year, we will make revisions to our general fund budget, depending on items that hopefully we appropriate expenditures that will last us through the remainder of the fiscal year. Sometimes some purchases are a little bit more than others. Some expenditures run a little long for a variety of reasons, and some things just naturally need to be adjusted throughout the year. One of those that you'll see in your packet is the hotel motel money. As part of that resolution, one of the things that we'll request in that resolution for approval tonight is an increase in the hotel motel occupancy tax money. It's money we, of course, receive throughout the year, our hotel motel tax. Along with that, in the expenditure side of that, you'll see the hotel motel taxes, 20,000 increase. You'll, you'll note an expenditure increase in the CVB, in the Consolidated Public Works. Those are marked as Parks and Recreation and Visitors Bureau. One is 8,000, one is 12,000. That's just balancing that offset of increasing those revenues in the hotel motel tax into the revenue line. The other item that I really want to note, and the rest of these are really just general housekeeping items, is an additional increase in the street and highways. That's basically our street department. That's increasing that budget by about $27,000. The increase in that, as Jay Holland, our city engineer, has noted in the past, again, that's for the Gateway East Main Street project, are the increase in cost in concrete and some of the materials to do that project. That, that, that line for that project that makes up part of the composition of the street department budget could run a little short in finishing up that project. Again, because of the increase in cost in materials and concrete, there's absolutely nothing that we can, we can do about that, but absorb that cost to finish that project. Those are the main key points in Resolution 2014-09. We'll know if you all have any questions.
Just one. The $45,000 decrease under the city council line, what is, what is that, what is that line item?
Yeah, the city, the city, to be specific, Tom, that is the council capital outlay line. When we have some excess funds or we have excess money, I mentioned to you earlier, we usually will put that in, and council capital outlay gives councils some discretion to do capital projects and whatever throughout the year. That was a little over 100, some thousand dollars at that point. We've actually cut that down 45. We're, council's not going to spend any, any real money of substance on council capital outlay because we're, we're, we're...
How much have you spent out of that fund this fiscal?
I think we've spent around, I think we've spent around like 15, 15,000 or something like that out of that.
Off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head. I think it was an expenditure late fall last year, if memory serves me correct. Again, we're, we're going into the last quarter of the fiscal year. We used that money to match up for our land and water conservation fund for the playground project on North Buchanan Park. They actually just came and did a site inspection last week. They're not going to have any response back to us on that grant until the fall, is what, one of the things we anticipated.
So for this fiscal year, we don't, we don't need that?
No, I could not, why would I anticipate usage of that? And that 45...
It's snowing. I'm shocked that we...
Well, surprisingly, and Jerry's not here, to, to their credit, we stockpile salt.
You should sell it right there.
Well, you know, there's a thought. But we haven't really, as odd as it sounds, with the, with the stockpile and the surplus that we've had, we really haven't spent as much in, in our snow removal. You know, to, to our guys' credit, and actually thinking a little bit ahead of times, we ordered even, even in off-season, when, when, you know, there's obviously no snow on the ground. And one of the snows that we had a couple of years ago wasn't, or the winters we had wasn't very bad, so that afforded us an opportunity to get an even larger jump on, on our, on our salt surplus, if you will. We have a little bit, maybe a little bit of snow left. Hopefully, that's over. But that, that is Resolution 2014-9. Unless there are any other questions, I would recommend to council consideration of approval of Resolution 2014-9, general fund budget revisions, and if possible, would request a roll call vote on that as necessary.
I would make the motion that we do accept the resolution and pass it. Is that presented?
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Not all in favor signify seven to say aye. Roll call? Take that back. Ambrose, will you call the roll?
Ron?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Period's unanimous.
And Tom, I want to reference the last few pages of that, or actually the line-by-line items. And I apologize, it's 11633 for council capital outlay originally. Sorry. I can get it. The next item is another business item. That is the 2014-15, so we're in next fiscal year's general fund budget. Those will be on the next three pages, I believe, of your council packet. We did have a finance committee meeting, oh gosh, it's been a few weeks ago, and discussed and the, the budget was presented to that finance committee meeting. There were several discussions. A lot of the discussions that we had in the finance committee were really needed discussions of planning ahead. There were requests by Chief Gregory for an additional officer, Mitch Tacey for a couple firemen. And then there was discussion, of course, about police and fire fees. That, that item, because we haven't really made a decision, and there's a lot that would go into, into that consideration, is not in the budget. There was a request by the CVB for a formula exchange. I've been working with Laura Meadows on that. Looks like we're going to be approached with a, with a, an annual appropriation. That is not in the budget as well. So I just wanted to make note of that. Those are some decisions that we can make later on. The budget has to be presented, approved and presented to the state auditor's office by, I believe, March 26th. So nothing wrong with, with doing it right now, but we, we don't have that much time to put that in. Those, those discussions, to be quite frank with you, those, those discussions can happen between now and the end of this fiscal year. We do have a budget revision that we have to do in July. That's when we have to indicate exactly what our unassigned fund balance was at the end of the year, begin of the year on, and that those, I don't know if you're veterans on this council, know, we do that every year. That's usually the time when I take the opportunity to go back and present to you our unassigned fund balance. fund balance. And if it's, if it's over the projection that we have in our budget, which I anticipate it is, then that's, that's the opportunity for council to make some, some appropriation considerations. I do want to do, as I do every year, I wanted to give you a 2014 general fund budget narrative, if you may. Under our revenues, there was no significant revenue increase to report for 2014-15. Our BNO tax revenue continues to remain steady. Our hotel motel tax remains conservative. Budget does not include, again, increases for police and fire fees. It is recommended by, by myself that we continue to explore those police and fire fees. Our overall revenue projections are 415,382 lower for 2014 because of some bond money that we use to complete the public safety complex, which is a little, little off schedule, but not by, maybe by a couple of weeks. Our balance on hand projections and our street and public safety projects that should be completed, one of those again being the Gateway East project in this current fiscal year. I do also want to report that our coal tax estimate, that would be on page two of your budget, that 18,000 mark, that remains the same. It's actually, it's actually down from a couple of years ago. It remains the same as the current year's budget appropriation, but down overall because of less coal production and of course the ever increasing government regulations on new mine openings and business. Under expenditures, I want to note a few highlights. The budget does include an across-the-board $500 increase in compensation for full-time employees. This budget does not include any additional requests for full-time employees within any department. I'm still going to make that recommendation that we look into hiring freeze for 2014-15. The budget does not include any additional increases in health insurance expenditures. We have not received our health insurance renewal yet. There's nothing that I can do about that. My understanding, the delay is that the health insurance company is still looking over the wonderful Obamacare and the impact that may have.
What, what, I'm sorry, interrupt. What percentage of premiums do the employees pay?
The employees pay zero.
Zero, okay.
Overall expenditures decreased 4,010,382. Fire truck debt payoff was made. There's no public safety complex expenditure in 2014-15. Our transportation enhancement, also known as the Gateway East project, should be completed. And of course, there's a decrease in appropriations from the council capital outlay line at this time. One thing I do want to note, and this is important for, it's going to ride with us for about 30 years unless we pay it off, hopefully sooner than later, is there is a continuous expenditure of 41,000. That will account for the overall monthly payments on the USDA loan for the conference center at Brushy Fork.
So that's a new expenditure line in this year's budget that we're going to keep for some time?
Forever.
Hopefully not 30 years. I don't want to sit here 30 years from now, like, gosh, I'm going to pay that thing off.
Although your interest rate is so low.
Correct.
It doesn't make any sense to pay that off.
Yeah, this time. So that is the budget narrative. You do have in front of you the proposed 2014-2015 general fund budget. I recommend approval of the 2014-15 general fund budget.
And the motion to approve 2014-15 general fund budget?
I will move that we approve it and I'd like to say also that I, I'm really pleased with the way Michael has worked on this budget and with also the way that council has, has gone over it and presenting a budget that is probably unlike anything that the federal government has ever seen. We, we have a fine budget. We, the city is in really good financial shape. I don't know when your state of the city address is, Mayor, but, but we're doing okay. And I'd like to say that I've been talking to a lot of people out there about the increase in police and fire fees, and I have not gotten any objection whatsoever from anybody I've talked to about an increase in those fees. Everybody's can't believe for one thing, well, it's only a month and a half a month now, well, gee whiz, you know. They, they realize we need that protection and I think most of them are willing to go ahead and pay for it. With that, I, I do move that we accept the budget that's presented.
This budget, this budget represents keeping the, the status quo as far as police and fire fees, is that right?
That is correct. Again, as noted, any decision by council to increase those fees would require a budget revision, which is perfectly normal to do that. And again, the appropriation, if council decided to add additional officers or officer or firemen or firefighters, I should say, then we, we would adjust that accordingly with the resolution.
Have we received any formal request to consider that action?
No, it was brought up during our finance committee session.
That's all right. I was in Charleston. Sorry, missed that.
So do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion?
Does this have to be by roll call?
I, I have a few comments. I think the, I'll approve the, the affirmative for this 14-15 budget, but I, I think we'd still have some real challenges, issues financially for the city that we, and Michael and I have talked about this. I think he concurs that we have some issues that we need to address the next three to five, 10, 15, 20 years on out there. This council, I've been on this council now for almost 10 years and I have another little two years ago, but we need to still take a look at some things that are going to impact us in the future that we don't have a lot of control sometimes of our destiny. You know, we, I've been talking about the defined benefit plan for our employees and we have no control of that. You know, the state's going to tell us what we have to pay each year and you got a historical stock market. When I came on the council, the defined benefit contribution for the employer was 10 and a half percent. It's what, 14 and a half percent?
It's actually 14%.
14%.
And they knocked it down.
And, and the stock market's at a historic high. You know, you wonder what's the relationship to the pension plan versus what the market's doing and so forth. I'm hoping the, the presentation, you start with home rule and the application is going to give this city and municipality a little bit more control of its own financial destiny for the future. I want to emphasize that with the debt, we got low-cost debt, which is very nice, especially for the armory out there in Brushy Fork. I think we need to really separate, when you look at the fire and police fee, separate that from whether you're going to employ another police officer or firefighter. I think the issues in some ways are tied together, but in some ways are not because the, I don't think we've ever structured the fire and police fee the proper way at the very beginning. As you said last couple of council meetings, Michael, there's a subsidization of the commercial enterprises and large enterprises from the individual residents and the citizens. I think we have to take a look, as you said, Tom, about how much percentage the employees pay premium for the health insurance. It's zero. We're about the only, I think we're probably the only employer in town that pays 100% premium for health. I'm not suggesting we make a change on that right now, but I think there's, all these issues have to be dealt with at some point in time and there's a high and higher percentage of our overall budget that is related to the benefits to the employees that we have. And we have to take a serious look at that. I think the level playing field for the BNO tax, I'm for a comprehensive BNO tax. I think we need to address that again. But there's a lot of issues we need to deal with rather than just simply this one year's budget. And I just want to keep that in front of everybody, that this is a fine budget, but we got a lot of issues we have to deal with from a financial standpoint. And I'll have some recommendations in the next couple of months about some other areas that I think we can save money on that, that makes sense for the city that wouldn't really impinge negatively on anybody. So I just need to make that comment.
Okay. Now, ready for question? All in favor of approving the general fund budget for 2014-15? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Yeah.
I do want to make a note from, from another budgetary standpoint, and this is by code. If you'll notice on the second page of your agenda, the calendar that Rich always puts out, April 15th, 10:00 AM, the note there that, that is council lay the levy, so we actually lay the, the tax levy for the city. We have to do that the third Tuesday of, of April. By law, that actually falls on April 15th. It's at 10 o'clock, usually lasts five minutes.
Fortuneous as that.
Yeah. You, it's usually a five-minute meeting, but you know, you need to make, make note of that. We, we need to have a quorum to do that.
Can we do that on a conference call rather than actually come to the city?
I guess. I mean, we can do other things telephonic.
We, as long as every member, we can hold telephonic meetings.
As long as every member.
We are allowed to. Am I correct, council?
I believe Mr. Clemmons's last attendance at one of those seminars that the State Ethics Commission weighed in and said that that is permissible. And I think earlier, Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, maybe six months ago, Rich had that as part of your council packet.
I think I've heard that at other times, State meetings. I think we can do that. I can tell you right now, I won't be here. I have a doctor's appointment.
But I know.
And I got to go get my life back.
I'm pretty sure that, but we have to be in a business where every member can hear every other.
Yes, that's right.
Or have a quorum here.
Yeah, or have a quorum here.
Yeah.
We got four people here.
I will say, if you don't like 10 o'clock, we can do it anytime, but it has to be on April 15th.
And we have it.
We can bring donuts or hot chocolate.
Or they have it at Los Trancas.
It must be done on that day.
On that day.
Yes.
Has to be done that day. That's, that's by code. That's what I said.
One more example of the regulation.
Better on home rule application.
We may, if that's, if that's a deep point of contention or someone, we can change that.
Well, would we, would we be better off in the early afternoon, four or five?
I'm good anytime, so I'll be here whenever you.
How about 7:00 AM in the morning?
Okay, we'll leave it at 10:00.
The next item, and Ron, I appreciate, appreciate your comments on the point, by the way. The next item is the much awaited, maybe, maybe not awaited, home rule application for the city of Buchanan. You have that in your council packet as well. What I want to do is, we have to schedule, at the end of my re-discussion on our home rule application, we have to schedule a public hearing. The home rule application has to sit in house at City Hall for a period of 30 days, which is going to pretty much take the whole, the whole month of April. The next council meeting we have is May 1st, so we'll just add a few more than 30 days to it. So we need to schedule a public hearing for May 1st. At the May 1st meeting, I'll be giving you kind of the full-blown proposal. Did not want to do that tonight because of all of the presentations being made, but we'll get a full-blown proposal. But I do want to hit the four proposals that, that are included in the, the home rule application. Proposal number one is identified as enterprise zones. This enterprise zone would be established by the city of Buchanan for commercial and industrial use and development, whether that be new construction and new development or an expansion of existing development or retention of development. Those, those enterprise zones would be designated and identified by Buchanan City Council and within those would be tax incentives, economic development tax incentives. The first incentive would be a municipal real and personal property rebate. The second of those incentives would be a BNO tax exemption. I'll go over those just briefly. What this would enable us is, it would enable us under, under home rule in establishing these enterprise zones to provide economic development incentives in the form of tax rebates and exemptions for real and personal property and BNO tax. As far as municipal real and personal property is included, it would be a maximum, a maximum of five years, up to 100% rebate on real and personal property as it relates to the city of Buchanan. If you are a business or you're within town and you get a, you get a property tax receipt, you'll notice it's broken down with the county, the Board of Education, the city of Buchanan, the library board in excess levy. What we would do under this enterprise zone was, the city of Buchanan would offer a rebate, much like if you get a cell phone or you get something, you get money back when you turn in for a rebate. A business that is coming into Buchanan, bringing jobs, bringing economic development, could apply under an enterprise zone and being defined under, under an enterprise zone would actually receive a, up to 100% real and personal property tax rebate only from the municipality. You get your tax ticket and you're a business and the total tax that you would pay is $10,000 and 3,000 of that, I'm just arbitrarily, 3,000 of that goes to the county, 3,000 goes to the Board of Education, 3,000 to the city of Buchanan and 1,000 goes to the library. The 3,000, the county would collect that $10,000, would disperse us through our ad valorem, the $3,000, and we would rebate that $3,000 back to that business. The next item would be a BNO tax exemption. That would again be up to five years, up to, up to 100% toward that business every year, meeting certain criteria, and I want to stress, and I'll do this in my presentation, certain criteria. There'd have to be a certain capital investment that would have to be made for them to qualify for this. There'd have to be a certain amount of full-time employees that they would have to retain. They would have to report on every quarter. That would have to be made. We would just would not give these exemptions and give these credits without them demonstrating to us that they're meeting and retaining these criteria. The BNO tax exemption again would be up to five years, 100%. They would still be required with each of those years to report their BNO tax. However, they would not be paying that BNO tax until the sixth year. Again, this is a pretty bold, pretty aggressive proposal. Under our home rule, all this is doing, this is very unique. No other municipality, the state of West Virginia is doing this. No other municipality offers this type of economic development incentive where others are taxing and taxing. We are essentially investing in these companies within these, within these industries and these businesses on the premise that they are bringing jobs, they're bringing a capital investment to our community and we are giving, we are giving them exemptions and rebates in turn as long as they meet those criteria. The second, the second proposal deals with property nuisance abatement and a special property tax lien and also on the ability to do onsite citations. Ever since I started here, we've had an issue with one particular piece of property, Richie Street and Tucker. Talked about that in nauseam. I know in our, in our, in our, in our housing board meetings, there was frustration at every meeting about the inability to go in and abate or remedy this nuisance. The problem with that was if we went in and spent taxpayers' money to abate this nuisance, we would have to put a lien against the property and unless that individual refinanced or sold that property, we would never recoup that money. We would be wasting that money. What this does is this applies, this, this allows the city of Buchanan to go in and properly abate that nuisance. There has to be due process of law. We'll have to go to court, we'll have to get an order on that to abate that property. And once we go and we put taxpayers' money to clean up that property, we would put a direct property tax lien on that individual's property tax. So the next cycle that they paid their property tax, let's say they're just paying $500 in property tax and they have a $2,000 abatement that the city did to clean up their property, they would now have a tax bill for $2,500. We would get that money back. The next thing, and it's one thing that we've talked about, is our inability in other communities in West Virginia to provide onsite citations. This would allow a designee from the city of Buchanan, housing or zoning inspector or our law enforcement to actually go and issue onsite citations, much like traffic violations for individuals that are, that are in violation of this. I will say this, about 80% of the stuff that Rich Clemmons sends out to individuals notifying them about their property, I know because I received a copy of it, 80% is either clutter or yards, grass, obnoxious weeds. Basically, a lot of that stuff really doesn't cost money, it's really just pure laziness. And that stuff can be, that stuff can be cleaned up and this is going to give us absolute teeth to get that cleaned up in our properties. And I also have, I also have a, I have to do a financial or fiscal impact. And I will say this, and I'll state this at our public hearing, if you have a property, there's a, there's a Realtor magazine that, that commissioned a, a company to, to do a survey and an estimate. If you have a property and you live next to a property that is unkempt or in bad condition, that will devalue your property by at least 10%. If you have a $100,000 home, no matter what you do with that home, no matter how attractive that home is, what aesthetics you do with that home, you are going to lose $10,000, $10,000 of 10% of your value. $200,000 home, do the math, that's 20,000. So that greatly impacts, impacts other individuals and their investments. So that is proposal number two. Proposal number three is a civil service employment of part-time officers and the expansion of applicant's maximum age. of applicant's maximum age. As Chief Gregory reported on, police officers and crime in the city of Buchanan, as other places in West Virginia, is increasing. We're having a lot of drug activity. I'm sure with the weather getting better, that will that will probably unfortunately increase. Police officers need resources. Resources for police officers or officers. And sometimes we may not have the ability to to pay for a part-time officer, I mean, a full-time officer, but those those problems are still real, those problems are still there, and they need resources. Under this, this would provide the opportunity for our police department to hire part-time officers under home rule for more than a 90-day period. If you recall, we had Adam Gissy, who's now the sheriff of Lewis County, work for us on a part-time basis. They can only work up to 90 days. Adam did an excellent job while he was here, but he was a part-time officer. We're asking under home rule to expand that ability to to go beyond the 90 days to allow part-time officers. I will express this, it's not a way to circumvent having a full-time officer. Now, this can be used to say Chief Gregory needs additional officers, maybe an officer is out injured, maybe he wants to step up patrols on a particular Friday night or Saturday night, or he needs additional manpower, an additional investigation, maybe they have an investigation that's taking the attention of their full-time officers. This would be the ability. There is a cap there, I want to stress, there's a cap within home rule that provides that only 25% of your officers can be full-time, and that's 25% of the approved, actual working full-time officers. We have nine officers.
Part-time.
Part-time.
Part-time officers. We have nine full-time officers. So 25% of that would be a little over two, two, two and a half. We don't actually have a half a person. So the maximum that we could have are two at any time, part-time officers. The next item with that is the increasing the expansion of the applicant's maximum age. We are hamstrung a little bit from time to time by state code for accepting applications for full-time officers with our age. I think our age goes to 40. So anyone over 40 years old cannot apply to be a full-time police officer with the city of Buchanan, and this is like that across across the state of West Virginia. Under this provision in proposal three, we're asking to increase the maximum age to 45 for full-time officers, and all we're asking is to have the same provisions that are provided for the county sheriff's deputies under the county portion of the West Virginia state code. So that is proposal number three. Proposal number four deals with online sale or disposition of other municipal property. Under proposal four, there's nothing really clearly stated within West Virginia code, there's nothing clearly stated within West Virginia code that that credits or discusses online sale or disposition of of real estate property or surplus property for a municipality. What we are asking is to, again, continue to do our class class advertisements as prescribed by state code, but also be able to put in that advertisement and also have the flexibility to put those surplus items and that surplus real estate online, on online auctions. We have had auctions, actual physical auctions in the city of Buchanan two times since I've been here, and I leave both of those auctions with a little bit of a bitter taste in my mouth because I don't feel we're realizing the full potential revenue that we can obtain through the surplus property that we have for the city of Buchanan. And I think we have a duty to try to maximize what we can what we can receive. So that's able to actually put that on the market and put that out, put that out to other other entities or other individuals outside of our general circulation area that may be interested in in seller disposition of our of our property. Again, I will go into much more depth with these and explain a little bit more of the home rule process. I think it's appropriate at the public hearing to do so, but you do have the application in front of you. Please take a look at it. Please let me know. If you have any comments or thoughts, I'll be happy to answer those if you need explanation.
Has that public hearing been scheduled?
I will. We'll get to that in just a minute.
Sorry.
It needs to be May first scheduled, which is actually our first council meeting in May. Well, I envision we have the public hearing, and there's a protocol we have to do with the home rule board. We'll have the public hearing. I'll do my formal presentation. We'll open it up to the floor for for the folks in the community and for council officially. And then there's an ordinance that needs to be considered for council. We'll have to, you know, I'll have to approve an ordinance, and that ordinance will also be May first. And the ordinance is basically saying we we are submitting an application to the home rule board, and second reading of that will fall on May 15th, and the application needs to be submitted to Charleston to the home rule board by June 2nd, 2014. This is a very aggressive, where others are increasing their revenues, taxing their citizens. We are, we are looking in a way to do the opposite because we are investing in economic development. Yes, maybe I'm getting on my soapbox here, but it's very unique. No one else is doing that, and I think this is something that other municipalities in the state of West Virginia could potentially latch on. Yes, the rebates and yes, the exemptions last a five-year period, but we have residual, we have residual effects from that. We're employing individuals within our community. Those individuals may want to choose to live here, may want to build a home here. They, of course, they'll be patroning our other businesses, maybe other businesses spring off, or maybe other businesses can latch on to the development of those those businesses that seek tax incentives under enterprise zones.
Well, not only that, you have to make a significant enough investment in your operation that you're probably going to be here longer than five years and you get the benefit of that.
Let me, let me just bring something to light. I mean, I don't want to keep yakking on this, but there's some.
You're from the Mr. McCully School of Public Speaking.
I did. I attended his class last year. Let me, let me turn to page nine of your of your of your packet, of your application. This is commercial business A, and I am using actual numbers from my office as treasurer, the city of Buchanan building permits, and the Upsher County Tax Office, and what is in something called RDS means, which is kind of the Kelly Blue Book or the Bible for for contractors that lays out cost of square footage. But commercial A, all of the, all of the things you see here are actual numbers derived from businesses within the city of Buchanan, even though some of those are spread out. If you had a business in commercial A, and they received, they met all the criteria, and they received the five-year rebate and tax exemption for BNO. If they created a 100,000-square-foot building, a pretty big building, and the total construction cost and capital was $5,500,000, and that is a real number, was $5,500,000, if you look, and you'll see a breakdown of the annual monies that they would have paid in BNO, the annual monies that they would have had, if, you know, from the municipal portion of the real and personal property tax. If you go all the way to the bottom, the five-year investment or the tax credits that that company, commercial business A, would receive, 100,000 square foot, $5.5 million capital and construction investment, they would receive in tax credits and incentives That commercial business would receive approximately 16.5% in real and personal property rebates and municipal BNO taxes returned on the initial construction and capital investment over a five-year period under the incentives offered in the enterprise zone program.
And that's money that we would not be collecting.
Money we would not be collecting.
However, without this program, this business probably wouldn't look like here anyway.
That's the baby.
This is not a spend, this is not a spend, this is forgone, this is going to be forgone revenue, not an expense.
But at the end of five years, we would be.
We would be realizing that. But 16.5% return on a 5.5 million building is, maybe that's the incentive to do it. I don't know. But I tell you what, it gives us a tool that no one else in the state has.
Gives the development authorities.
It gives Steve Foster that. You know, when someone comes in, my experience is in other states, business will come in, and the first thing they ask is what incentives do you have to offer us? You don't have anything, if you don't have your cards available, bye-bye. They go somewhere else. And this is a competitive market, but I want to tap into the fact that Buchanan, in the last 18 months, and still we're in that 18-month period, has experienced eight, about $18 million in construction projects. $18 million in construction projects, including Autozone, Taco Bell, Buffalo Wowie's, and all of that shopping complex there, and the West Virginia Army National Guard. And that does not include the development that's going on at West Virginia Wesleyan College. That's pretty significant. We're on track to get about $100,000 in contractor BNO. $100,000. It's pretty good. You know, so.
Nothing about all the others that they have.
Well, that's really impressive for a city of 6,000 people.
So we want to hone into that. And, you know, Quarter H, you know, everybody's been talking about it probably before I got here, when that thing's going to get constructed. It will get constructed at a point, and we're going to have all of our ducks in a row that we can grow the city of Buchanan in a controlled growth environment.
Industrial Park's not in the city.
No.
It's not.
It's not. But this is a tool, and this is, this is a tool that we can provide. And I know, you know, and you hear about it in the paper all the time, that municipalities are are struggling for revenue, and I don't want us to to lose sight of that. We manage our money very, well, we manage our money. I don't say very well, I'm not going to pat, you know.
Pat yourself on the back.
But we do that in an extent, to an extent, and all of the staff, everybody does a great job. But but this affords us the availability, and I talked to the mayor today about this, this is the tortoise and the hare. We are the tortoise in this situation. We are, we are sitting on our hands while development comes in. If they qualify, they have to qualify, we're not just going to give this to everyone. We're just not going to give it to someone who's putting in some whatever development that's out there. But this is really a good opportunity, so those are the four.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah. Well, you know, those are the proposals.
Preaching. No. I will, I think that's.
I'm very passionate about this.
I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction, Michael. One suggestion I would make, and I've talked about this before, is to put a one- or two-page sort of a summarization of what you really nail as the advantages doing, going this direction, and, you know, what is the potential downside. And I would also, I think, in the next two months, I think some of the, I think we have some issues that we can do a better job and be more financially prudent than what we're doing. I don't think we're doing as, you know, I've talked about this too, there's a couple areas that we could, we talked about at last council meeting, execu session, that we could have some, I think, savings that makes sense financially, and I want to stress that for the future also. So I think you're doing a good job. I'll pat you on the back.
Well, you know, I want to say, you know, the property nuisance thing, you know, if we're able to get this under home rule, the ability for us to send a letter to an individual to to clean up their property has a lot more teeth when we're able to put that on a tax note. And again, we're getting that cleaned up. We don't have to deal with individuals that are coming to council meetings. We can act. Onsite citations are another ability that we'll be able to have that we do not currently have, so we can start to address those. But, you know, and again, the police civil service and dealing with that as well is another interesting thing, and even down to our our other proposal with online sale of property and disposition of property. All, all pretty unique approaches. This is what home rule's about. And again, I want to stress, this proposal goes to Charleston. If this proposal is approved, it doesn't mean that any of these proposals are law. We still have to draft an ordinance, and none of these become law until we we create ordinances for each one of those, and if this passes, then we can sit down and talk about which one do we want to go after first, which one we want to talk about, and then Dave McCully will spend restless nights creating ordinances for our, for our obligation. This is a five-year thing, so, and there are measurements that that we'll have to do quarterly. We may have to get onto Charleston and report on how things are going. But I do want to stress that, even though this application is submitted, and even if this application is approved, none of this automatically becomes law, there is, there is a whole process that has to go through that everyone is familiar with, with our other ordinances as well.
I got to admit that the nuisance ordinance, I've, I've seen the letters that Rich has sent out the last month or so, and several of the residences that he's sent out, notices to have already got their PhD in this stuff, because it's all piled higher and deeper on their porches than it was before he sent the layers out. And until we get an ordinance that forces us to enforce the ordinances we have, we really need to start enforcing our ordinances now and not waiting until the home rule is is taken care of. And I do agree with the home rule, we need it desperately on all of those things. By golly, you know, I have people laughing my face just because, you got an ordinance, what are you doing about it? You don't enforce it. We need to enforce our ordinances. Chief, we need somebody out there taking those cars that are parked on the other side of the road and giving them tickets. And we need people to write letters about cars that are junked, taken care of. We need the porches that the, we need them cleaned up, and they're not doing anything about it, so.
I will say this.
I'm really frustrated with that particular issue.
If we, if we do home rule and we're able to to put a lien on properties for cleanup, you could have situations to where we may have to go and mow someone's grass, and they're going to get about $150 tax. And, you know, clutter, clutter is another thing. I mean, our, our waste department will pick anything short of a dead body up the curb if you get it out there. I mean, honestly, you have to just call the office. You just have, yeah, there you go, good. But if you, if you call off the office, we'll take care of that. But if we go and we have to clean up your clutter, I don't think you want to see the bill that we're going to, we're going to produce. So.
It's a real.
It's my soapbox, I guess, probably, probably speaking a little out of turn.
It's not going to get done, period. I mean, we're sitting here, and we only have ourselves to blame because we don't do it. And it's a culture shift that's going to have to take place. And to me, the start of that is a home rule, where you can give citations, and you get teeth behind it, but I'm still very skeptical whether it's going to get done. We may end up owning some property we really don't want because of not paying the taxes. I don't know. But, you know, the property at the corner of Richie and Barber and the property at the corner of Richie and Tucker, where the gentleman has just laughed in our faces and went ahead and done as he wished, and I'm still anxious to see if it's by the last day of this month, if it's cleaned up the way it's supposed to have been. We let him skate on the first issue of the trailer being there. I mean, if Chief Gregory threatens me 18 times, hey, slow down, or I'm going to give you a ticket, and he never has done it, well, I'm going to try for that 19th time. You know, it's, it's ridiculous.
Also want to say with the home rule that.
Don't do that, chief.
Don't threaten you.
We're not bound by just these proposals. If there's something in the course of our home rule application, if we're approved, there's a proposal five or six on whatever issue, we just have to go through a process, it's a little lengthy process, but we can add other proposals to this as need be, and, you know, if there's ever anything that pops up at council or in the office that, hey, this would be great for home rule, then certainly that's something we can add if we're approved. But at this time.
We can amend, right?
At this time, formally presented, the home rule application is proposed and request that council approval to schedule a public hearing for May 1st, 2014.
Second? Second, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, ayes have it.
I think we should.
Thank you, Michael, as you're free to.
It makes it mandatory that every citizen, captain, to this public meeting.
I just have a couple brief announcements for council. The police department continues to be steady and doing a number of things. We are working on some things that I hope to, it's a little premature to speak on now, but I hope to report to council here in the next few meetings. We have been invited by the Governor's How We Save You program to attend an awards luncheon in Bridgeport tomorrow for the department, one, to be recognized for its efforts in DUI enforcement, and then specifically for Corporal Courtney to be recognized for his efforts individually. So we're very proud of Corporal Courtney, we're very proud of all of our officers for all of their efforts to keep our community safe. So we'll be attending that luncheon there tomorrow. Just one other thing, we continue to get numerous concerns with the city park and individuals going to the park after hours, all hours of the night. Just last night, we had a call, it was about 4:00 AM, of numerous individuals in the park. Our officers do try to control all areas of town, including all of our parks, our cemetery, all our areas in town, as much as what our limited manpower will allow. There are still occasions where we do have only one officer to cover all of Buchanan. So we are receptive as much as we can to these, to these issues throughout town, and we try to do as much as we can with them. But just to be advised, and this kind of goes along with a lot of the things I've reported to council in the past, just the variety of issues that we face on a day-to-day basis and that lists as wide as it is, long as this is a lot of the issues that we face, and obviously we need resources and support to be able to more efficiently deal with these these types of issues.
Somebody arrested in the park?
No, sir, they were already gone by the time we got there. There was only one officer on duty at the time.
You need a dog that's got big teeth.
I have a dog.
That's got big teeth. You need a dog that's got big teeth, that's got big teeth, that can run faster than you can, and can get out there and then chase them down.
You got an audience back there, so.
Do you want to know what happened last night? They announced it over this, what happened when the neighbor called, they put it over the scanner, and you can now pick up, I didn't know this till Amanda Hayes taught me, you can pick up on your cellphone, you can pick up scanner program, and the adults, it wasn't college students, holding the ritual at 4:00 a.m., 25 to 30 of them, yelled, "The cops are on their way, go," because the neighbor heard them chanting, they ran, got into six or seven cars, and tore out of there before the police arrived.
What kind of ritual?
Well, I wasn't there, I unfortunately slept through the phone call. It took a while in talking about it, but Matt and I can, it's the solst, I mean, I.
Oh, so this was just last night?
Yeah, and I hate to think about what kind it might have been, but there's not very many that it could have been.
Wow.
But it was at 4:00, I believe she said, what, 4:19 this morning?
Is that true about the cellphones? Because I know.
Yes, I've heard it, I've heard it.
There's a program, I can't pick up Buchanan or Upsher County, I can pick up Morgantown and stuff like that, but for some reason, the frequency that, for you guys, don't come in. I've tried.
Ron, get with us after, we'll show you how to get Kazakas down on your truck.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, I'm not worried about people storing my license plate, I'm worried about what's going on in the park.
Well, I'm worried about the park, too.
Yeah, because the last time we got the police down there, after searching the vehicle, I believe, is Nick still in here? I believe there were three different types of narcotics found in it. I mean, this isn't just bring the police down on Park Street, they're finding when they're coming. But last night, I really wish, you know, because it would have been interesting to find out exactly what they thought they were doing at 4:00 a.m.
Well, you know, I drove past the park just this week on the upper side, and where the fence used to be and everything, and it's perfect access to every point in there, or egress, or whatever, you know, because it's, you come in one side, they're going out the other, and like you say, Matt, if you only got one officer down there, Lord knows, I was down there with Doug once, and I was huffing and puffing, and he was just going right ahead, but there's no way you could find anybody but one officer going through that park.
Yeah, you could be jarring.
It's like going out through the cemetery, too, you know, no way one officer can ever find somebody.
That's right.
Well, I think it makes point that Matt's trying to make, relative to the need manpower.
I don't disagree with that.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, sir, that's all I had to report, unless there are other questions.
Other questions for Matt?
I have a question, and you're going to go do a demonstration, is that right, someplace? A public demonstration?
Yes, sir.
Would you or your men or somebody be willing to go to that public demonstration, too?
It just depends, I have a very busy schedule.
Well, I know, but.
We'll announce it at a significant time for.
I got a mission, I came in here to make, I was all prepared to introduce a motion that would do away with the ALPRs. I'm a little hesitant right now, because I want to hear some more information about what it, about what can be done and what can't be done. The gentleman from the state was impressive, but, you know, having been there and everything, too, I know what, I always sold my product the way I wanted to, so it'd go over. I wish he had stayed to hear what was said, but I want to become more informed about this, what it can and can't do, and if it can be hacked into, if it can't be, before I present that motion. I'm going to decline tonight to present it, and wait to see, want to get more information. And you know I've been against this from day one, but that's where we go with that, and I appreciate you guys.
Anybody else?
Matt? Thank you, Matt.
So, whose turn is?
Well, unfortunately, Mr. McCauley doesn't have any time left.
Wait a minute, it's not his turn yet. Tom or Ken, whose turn is?
So, you skipped me, it's all right. He said we were fast. Water plant side, Tom and Jay, with the engineering firm with the basins and pipe gallery, as far as seeing what we need to do, as far as updating the plant itself. And on the line, I'm just going to update you on a few things, a few facts over the past year, as far as like leaks, just to give you an indication, January and February, as rough as the weather was and everything, we had 12 different leaks. 2013, we had a total of 32, so, I mean, the weather did impact us quite a bit on that. As far as meter readings, Amy, I know she doesn't like to estimate the bills, we don't either, but with all the snow and stuff, instead of having one meter reader out, we actually used four men, we used two to go down in separate areas, and two guys to go with each of them to shovel, to get the lids off to read those. I mean, that's just.
Let's have some order here, please.
And then, we actually had 30 meters bust during the cold spell, 75 to 100 calls, as far as either wanting the water turned off, or reporting that it was frozen, like I said, the 30 meters was in with the busted. And then, as far as like line footage for the year, 2013, we installed 7,086 feet of line, majority of that was at the armory. 17 valves we installed, 46 renewed were new services. And then, one other thing I'll mention is, we had one of our linemen be reclassified to lineman two, which this entails, he has to be able to operate in a certain amount of equipment, he took his WD class, passed it, so, he was reclassified to lineman two. And that's just about all I have for.
Questions?
Questions?
Thanks, Kelly.
Mr. McCauley?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief. Several updates. The Federal Flood Insurance Affordability Act was passed by the United States Senate last week. It basically gutted the Bickers legislation of 2012, and for the next four to five-year period, there will be no premium rate increases relative to flood insurance, so, that's really good news, we've been following that pretty closely.
Dave, let me encourage you to explain a little bit more, what was the problem?
In 2011, the report was filed with the United States Congress on behalf of FEMA. At that point, they were operating 18 and a half billion dollars in the red. And Congress, as they will do, it's like, what do you, how do you raise more money, since it's the National Flood Insurance Program, we just need to charge a lot more for national flood insurance premiums, make the people who are buying flood insurance pay for this. So, somebody in the House of Representatives gets together, somebody in the Senate, they sponsor a bill that's pushed through in 2012, that was going to increase flood insurance premiums in some instances 1,000 percent. So, that legislation was getting ready to kick in, and people were actually starting to get early bills relative to these flood insurance premiums, and then they raised the big fuss, because they didn't follow what was going on with the legislation until they get a bill, and the Senate and the House were deluged with lobbying efforts to revisit that bill, and not make the flood insurance premium folks pay for the increase. Meanwhile, the FEMA estimates that their $24 billion, had gotten $5.5 billion worse in the last three years in debt, that is, that the premiums aren't meeting what they're paying out. But notwithstanding that, the lobbying efforts, including those of the city of Buchanan, proved to be successful, it was overwhelming the pass by both the House and the Senate.
Part of that problem was that places that are relatively inexpensive in storm, were getting the same kind of increase that people who choose to live on the cliffs in California or wherever else, and then a disaster hits, and, you know, your heart goes out for people in New Orleans, but they choose to live below sea level, and what's up with that? And fine, let them pay their share, but it's just good news to me that that.
Those of us who've been here for a long time, and we had our flood event in '85, that was the first really huge flood that Buchanan, Upsher County, had seen in 40, 50 years. And then, now another almost 30 years has gone by, and we haven't seen anything like that. So, that really was the century flood. But why should the folks in Upsher County, where we hardly ever have, the other thing is, is when you have the hurricane surge, you're talking about fast-moving water that does a lot of damage. Our floods are slow cresting, slow recession, you're not talking about torrential things knocking buildings down and those kind of things, at least in Upsher County, West Virginia.
Flood losses in this area do not compare with flood losses in natural disaster areas. And you're having the.
And with the onslaught of earthquakes, you can get earthquake insurance here in Upsher County, by the way, too, and it's very minimal cost, $5, $6 a year.
Property values make a big difference. On your coastline, your property value.
Certainly. I did receive an email just today from Michael Kellerman, that says he's looking at a couple of different models that he will propose to the city, one of which would be relocation of the utility pools and utility lines altogether. I think another model will be his coming to the city and trying to acquire the rights, which they now believe they have to procure from the city of Buchanan. So, anyway.
Stay patient.
I'm just saying. More to follow, more to follow on that. I have a letter which I had prepared, and I'd really like to read it real quickly, that would be the next one going to Bill Eelenfeld, our federal prosecutor, I think Amy has included it as sort of an addendum to your packet. It hasn't been sent yet, and a letter of this sort, when we're corresponding with the federal government, I'd like you all to see what's going on before we do it. Dear Mr. Eelenfeld, thank you for taking time recently to discuss Buchanan's request for consideration for funds realized from confiscatory powers exercised by our federal government, pertinent to the Jeffrey Paglia, Hot Stuff Cool Things Matter, arising in Buchanan and Clarksville. Pursuant to our discussion and at your request, I am providing documentation supporting Buchanan's participation in the distribution of funds realized from the federal government's seizure of the stores and Mr. Paglia's assets. More specifically, the enclosed documents support two general financial justifications for Buchanan's request. First, considerable hours of Buchanan police officer time were expended during both the several months preceding the April 18, 2012 raid carried out in Buchanan, followed by the participation of the several Buchanan officers during the April 18 raid itself. Police Chief Matt Gregory has offered a memorandum attaching 54 pages of documents, including lab reports and information concerning controlled buys of contraband at the Hot Stuff Cool Things Store in Buchanan by various informants. Additionally, in the Chief Gregory materials are three compact discs containing additional relevant information. Clearly, the enclosed documentation establishes that the vast majority of the time involving the officers of the Buchanan Police Department was expended during the many months leading up to the April 18, 2012 raid on the Buchanan Hot Stuff Cool Things Store. Second, the Hot Stuff Cool Things Enterprise never paid any business and occupation taxes to our city during the entire time that it operated in Buchanan. While our city officials are aware that the revenues generated from the Buchanan store operations were considerable, since no BNO tax return was ever actually filed with the city administrator slash treasurer's office by Mr. Paglia or anyone else on his enterprise's behalf, our city officials may only speculate about the actual revenues realized from the Buchanan store's operations, from both legitimate as well as illicit sales, and the taxes that should have been paid to Buchanan. I know that our federal and state governments are much better informed after undertaking the appropriate forensic accounting and auditing of the store's operations to determine revenues realized from the Buchanan store's operations. Buchanan City Administrator Michael Doss has provided me with copies of two letters dated February 3, 2012, and March 16, 2012, observing the store's delinquent BNO tax status for calendar year 2011, which copies are also enclosed for your review, along with the yearly business and occupation tax return, retail and wholesale form, that was mailed with those letters. On behalf of the city of Buchanan, I renew the appeal to our federal government to consider some funding allocation to our city, of a portion of those funds realized from the seized assets of those who perpetrated so much damage within our community. Any assistance that you may render to Buchanan's realizing funds from those seized assets will be greatly appreciated, and as I observed in my November 21, 2013 letter to you, will assist our city in its ongoing local war on drugs. If you have any questions, contact me, very truly me. Then we have about 60 pages of documents that are attached with this letter, so, if the council's good with that, I don't know that there needs to be a motion to approve it, but if anybody's got any concern, I'd be happy to hear it. Hopefully, we can, they'll be, they meet once a month, this group of seven, that decides how they're going to allocate these funds.
When the next meeting is?
In April.
Okay, so they've met for March already?
The March 7th meeting came and went, and we just got the materials together this week, so.
Good, well done.
We'll see how it goes. What's the old saying, don't ask, don't get? You know, right. There's another letter in your packet, in the stapled stuff, that I'd like to go through just real quickly, too. Mayor, I don't know if you've signed the original letter yet or not, but this is the next letter that would be going to Major General James A. Hoyer, Assistant General of the West Virginia National Army National Guard. Just real quickly, dear General Hoyer, once again, and this is from Mayor Davidson, I bid you warm greetings from Buchanan. Everyone here in our community is very excited about the terrific progress that has been realized expecting the construction of the new armory complex. We are most anxious to see the facility's completion and opening later this year. During one of our recent city council meetings held on February 20, 2014, Dr. Joseph B. Reed appeared as a guest and requested the Buchanan City Council to approve my sending you, a letter specifically requesting that the National Guard consider declaring the entire new guard complex on Brushy Fort Road to be smoke-free. In fact, our city council unanimously endorsed that request. Dr. Reed informed the council that smoking indoors already was prohibited at the new armory complex, but Dr. Reed, speaking on behalf of all of the Upsher County Health Department, Upsher County Tobacco Coalition, and Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau, further requested the city council to encourage the guard to make the entire facility smoke-free campus-wide, and not just indoors. Dr. Reed recounted during his presentation the number of other smoke-free initiatives recently undertaken here in Buchanan, including smoke-free designations at St. Joseph's Hospital, the public school system, and a proposal now being considered impacting the entire campus of West Virginia Wesleyan College. Additionally, last year, our city council declared all parks located and festivals conducted in Buchanan to be smoke-free venues and events. Certainly, Dr. Reed's request is consistent with our community's trend of expanding the smoke-free environment, both indoors and outdoors. Dr. Reed readily identifies the purpose of the smoke-free effort as being one designed to enhance the health of employees as well as guests of the new armory complex, and as one that more specifically helps to protect everyone from the well-documented hazards of tobacco usage and exposure, both primary and secondary. I hope that our West Virginia Army National Guard will strongly consider designating the entire Buchanan Armory Complex to be smoke-free. Would like to discuss this matter further, please contact me at City Hall. Everyone associated with our city government is pleased and excited to continue our partnership with the guard to realize completion and opening of this wonderful new facility here. Very truly yours, Kenneth T. Davidson, Mayor. And a copy's going to everybody with their brother that's a stakeholder, right?
Pretty good.
Smoke, man. So, it's, again, I don't know, you approved the mayor previously sending this letter, but if there's anything that you take umbrage with substance, now is the time to speak before he signs it, it goes out in the mail tonight.
What else you got, Dave?
Just a couple other real quick things. I received 17 documents, or was it 31 documents? I think it was 17 and 14, from John Stumpf, Bond Counsel with the college, asking me to sign off on a litany of things, so the closing will be coming, Mayor, soon on the bond issue, on the Donnie Hall, and the electrical upgrades at Wesleyan. So, that's coming. Finished some title work, a couple other things cropped up with the Brook Street pump station, everything there is good. Ordinance 379, it's 16 more days before that one goes into effect. And I was out last week, went to Bradenton to visit my son I hadn't seen in almost a year, so I didn't get a whole lot more done on our meth contamination. year, so I didn't get a whole lot more done on meth contamination abatement ordinance, but maybe as early as the next meeting will be. We'll have something for you in draft form to dial one. That's all I have, unless you all have council questions for me. I do have just one other thing. Dorothy Short, one of our longtime city representatives, about a year ago, I told her that Dennis Cordis had the ability to take VHS tapes and put them on DVD. He does this all the time. And back in the last meeting of June of 1985, when Bill Short was leaving as mayor, I taped on the TV his at-last meeting and had it put on VHS tape. I told Dorothy about Dennis's ability to do that, and about a year ago, she gave me that VHS tape, and I told her, "I'll get right on that." And a year later, well, I finally got on it. Dennis, Dennis has made several of these, and I'm going to present Dorothy Short with one, but I'm presenting the city council with this. It's, it's tough for me to not tear up when I watch this thing, because when you sit there and you see Bill Short and Benke Poundstone and Richard Osborne and Bud Bennett and John Stockard and Merle Dawson, and the list goes on and on, most of the people that you see on that meeting 29 years ago are no longer with us. And it's, anyway, it's, I encourage you all to look at it. And Dennis is going to, he's going to encourage Channel 3 to actually show that meeting on Channel 3 in the days and weeks to come. It's, it's quite a, it's quite a piece.
If I may add a note-
Our meeting?
It's hard to tell what 29 years from now people will be saying about our group here.
They'll be calling the newspaper. If I, if I may make a note, some of the quality video isn't very good.
I'm sure.
But it's, enough is there.
Yeah.
Pretty neat.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this brings us to our consent agenda. Approval amendments, a regular meeting, March 6th, building and wiring permits, and a payment of the bills, motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made, a second. And second. Discussion, all in favor, signify so, and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Comments and announcements, Ron?
Oh, again, okay. No, I'm good. I'd like to welcome you back, Mayor.
It's good to be, it's good to be in it, where it's-
We're so glad to have you sitting there tonight instead of Rich Clements.
I know.
One comment, I got stopped on the street today by the two county commissioners and the county administrator, and was hit up on the topic of E9 on one mapping. And I told them what we need to do is to have a good old sit-down meeting if Megan and Michael can't work something out amongst themselves as administrators. And they kind of agreed that we need to sit down and talk about that. Some of the items they were telling me I don't agree with, and I'm sure they won't agree with some of the ones that we agree with, but we do need to sit down if we can organize that.
Have a fifth, Nick, there's a fifth Thursday in this week.
Wouldn't necessarily have to be a fifth, but I would say we, you know- I think we have a solution to that. Maybe we'll be able to say that at the next meeting.
Well, there may be a solution to that, but there were some other questions.
Yeah, there's some other issues.
That really bugs me that they were talking to me about it in the middle of the street.
Yeah. Well, it's been a little while since then.
Yeah. Another note, I wish everybody to have a great weekend and enjoy this first day of spring, the second, third, and fourth, and the snowfall on the fifth.
Yeah. Some people, it seems like enjoying the first day of spring a little bit more than others.
Yeah, sorry I missed that. Okay.
Tom?
I just want to thank Michael for his work on the budget, and I think it's a, it's a good roadmap for the next fiscal year. I agree with Dave that we've got, we've got some long-term questions that need to be answered, and how we do that. So between the budget and the home rule application, I think we've got some very good things to be excited about with the city's future. And grateful for him and for everybody that works here at City Hall that helped make that happen, that's all. Don?
Just wanted to welcome you back, and just wanted to encourage people at home, if they have strong opinions about some of the things we're talking about.
Yes.
To come here and to represent themselves, whether any of us agree or disagree with Mr. McGowan's point, he's coming and making an intelligent, well-informed argument in person with us, and that helps at least us have some dialogue about it. There's a lot of people that like to howl at the moon about this stuff, so if people could come and represent themselves about it, that would be great.
Dave?
Welcome back, Mayor.
Thanks.
Based on a lot of our comments this evening, if you want to read an interesting book, it's by Mark Levin, The Men in Black, and talks about what's happening as far as our constitution, what challenges we have for the future. But the, I attended an economic development executive meeting on Wednesday. The mayor wasn't able to go, and Rich Clements was out having fun on a cruise somewhere in the Caribbean. But the, I think it's really important in the next X amount of months, X amount of years, that the city, county, and I'd rather the city council and the county commission, we need to sit down, and we've got a lot of challenges ahead of us. The county especially has some financial challenges. And when the mayor ran for his first term six years ago, he talked about a community which was not just the city, but the county. And the Economic Development Authority has done a lot of things in the last 10 years, but they got some financial challenges ahead of them. People have talked about a recreational center with the, the old armory property up there to provide a recreational center for the youth in both the city and the county. You know, my position is neither one can finance that unless we have some kind of recreational bond levy and so forth. But when Michael talks about the home rule and about providing economic incentives, we have to remember a lot of what businesses will take a look at is the quality of life they have within the, the community that they're going to move to. And that's a cost, you know? We have to be able to finance some of the things that are needed long-term for the enhancing the quality of life. And if you look at West Virginia, we're a very, in many ways, our property taxes are relatively low compared to a lot of other areas in the country. But I do think we need strategic planning for the future, and I think it's really important that the county commissioners and the city council work together with those challenges. And everybody have a nice weekend.
Thank you. My comments would be, you can't help but see what's going on around the world with the situation in the Ukraine, and feel for the people who've lost loved ones there with the Malaysian flight. And we really need to be concerned about some of the things that are going on in the greater parts of the world. I'm concerned that this, this thing with the Ukraine could blow up and be something very terrible. And so we need to, we need to be mindful of that and consider that. I want to say to Mr. McGowan, I've had people comment to me, "Well, he's not even a resident of the city." And you can bet that my response is, "But he's a member of our community." And I've stood on that, and I'm glad Dave mentioned that earlier. That's, that's always been one of my main points. I'll say to you, I don't agree with you, but I certainly agree with your right to come in here and express your opinion, and you've, you've done it very well.
Thank you, sir.
And we've had a number of people who come in here to disagree with us that don't, don't do it as well, and they don't do it as, as nice as you've done it. And I appreciate you. And I would extend this invitation, as John said, to anyone who wants to come in here and talk to us about something you disagree with us, I hope that we would always reach out and listen to what you have to say. We're not going to always agree, but as long as I'm sitting in this chair, we will listen to you. And with that said, nothing further to claim our attention here in the seat, and will adjourn. Thank you.